Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 7th, 2021, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have you all with us here tonight. Ms. La Magna, please review the procedure for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the items or items of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comment and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please be clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer of such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either after election or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. La Magna, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Del Henry, are you with us, sir?
Here.
Motion to approve to excuse Commissioner Henry?
Second.
Motion to excuse Mayor Henry with extenuating circumstances and Commissioner Henry.
Second.
All in, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
And I need to clarify one thing on that motion. So, the motion to excuse Commissioner Henry is excuse her absence. The motion to excuse Mayor Henry is to excuse his physical presence here. So Mayor Henry will still be voting on matters due to his extraordinary circumstances.
The motion passes, right? Seven or six zero?
Six zero.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now have the invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Cantu.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanks today for letting us get by with Hurricane Elsa. We pray for those down in Miami who are underneath a stone and their loved ones. Our hearts go out to them. Please look after them. We appreciate everything you have done. We glory in our freedom. We want to say a special prayer for Officer Rayner and thank Chief Jakari and his units for apprehending the suspect. Please look down upon us. Let us make the best decisions for our city. Let us have everyone in mind when we do so, and let us say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021, regular city commission meeting. Some of...
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cantu with a second by Commissioner Reed. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of minutes of the June 2nd, 2021, regular city commission meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved six to zero.
And if we could allow the minutes to reflect that Commissioner Henry is now in attendance?
Yes.
We'll now move on to item number five, the agenda approval. If there are any changes, the city manager will now read them at this time.
There are no changes on this agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion approved by Commissioner Traeger, second by Commissioner...
May.
May, thank you. Didn't see it. I heard a voice over there. Sorry. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? During nothing, the agenda is approved seven to zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is our presentation, Presentation of the Kids Are First, Inc., and Ms. Rachel Arrazzali to present. Close, okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I appreciate you allowing me to be here. Especially thank you to Commissioner Cantu for recognizing Kids Are First. My name is Rachel Arrazashvili, if you ever want to pronounce it, and Kids Are First is a nonprofit that serves foster, orphan, and underprivileged children in our community, has been serving our community since 2002. One of the greatest kept secret is that we operate 100% volunteer, free clothing store for children in our community for over 12 years. I took over the organization after volunteering as a Guardian at Lightem volunteer, started Orphans Ministry at Calvary Christian Center, and then, yeah, and then took over Kids Are First. Kids Are First is an organization that was founded by a Guardian at Lightem, and when I took over, it was yearly helping over 200 children a year. In my first year of taking over Kids Are First, I was a new mom of now these 12 years old, and he was diagnosed with autism, and so I wanted to figure out how I can operate this organization out of my home smarter, not harder, work harder. And so after recognizing that over 85% of the items going out to the children that were strictly and solely recognized by the Guardian at Lightem program, because we were the nonprofit of the Seventh Circuit Court when I first came on board, I decided to open up a storefront so we can provide anything, basic essentials, that was donated from people like myself and like yourselves. And when I became a chamber member in Ormond Beach, they were having a sparkler on the evening, and that evening they offered one year free rent. And so that was my ticket. Nonprofit, no money, free rent, let's get in. And so the community started donating, Macy started donating, and as of today, we have doubled in our location size. We started at 1,200 square foot unit, now we are 3,000 square foot unit, and we went from helping 200 children a year to thousands of children a year. We not only provide with donations, tangible and financial donations, beds, strollers, high chairs. Matter of fact, on the way here, I connected a donor with somebody from the Guardian at Lightem that needed a bed, and so they're picking that up. We also provide back-to-school items. This past Christmas, through the donations in from 2A Ranch, we were able to provide over 300 children with Christmas. And when I say Christmas, it's more than one toy. It's like five toys. We have also helped with back-to-school, birthdays, bikes, strollers, anything that you provide for your children, we receive in, and we provide a one-on-one shopping experience for the family. We used to be the nonprofit to the Guardian at Lightem program. We've expanded, and now we help over, as you see on your form, 50 organizations. We do not receive any grants. It's private donors, and we notice that our families like to give to us because we don't resell, like other organizations that, you know, we donate to in the community. But we only invite one family in at a time unless we're doing a back-to-school event like we will in about two weeks. And so what we've noticed is that our main purpose is not just to provide the child, or the teen, or the foster parent, or the grandparent who's taking in their grandchild the items that they need, but it's also to give the children a choice. And so when I have a teenage girl come in and she does not know how to shop, that's an opportunity for me to pour into her as a mentor would, and be able to show her not only the correct size for her to wear, but also just love on her, encourage her, and resource, and whatever it is that she's requesting, reach out to my community for resources for her to get on board. We collaborate with pretty much any organization that identifies the need of the child, and their criteria is identify the need of a child in the system. We are still 100% voluntary. So pretty much all of our incoming donations go to overhead, which is about $30,000 a year, and then we raise about $10,000 to $20,000 off of just independent donors. And whenever we get a donation where we pretty much go out and spend it on the family or the child or whatever's needed. If I have a young man come in and he wears a size 15 sneaker and I don't have it, then we go out and buy it. Today, we have been fortunate enough to have our rent paid for the next, for the full year. We don't know what's going to happen next year, but we have never really concerned ourselves so much because we have people in our community that understand what we have been doing for 12 years, and I'm so glad to be here to be able to let you know that we've been here not only providing for Daytona, but all of Volusia. Right now, with our upcoming school year, we have had a backstock full of uniforms, but I think a lot of you are informed that they've gone away with uniforms. And so now I understand that my struggle may be getting people to donate jeans and pants because that's what they're going to be needing and that's what the children are going to be requesting. And so if there's any questions that you have, I'd like to open that up now. I mean, I don't mean to take your job. I can go on forever. I'm Puerto Rican, I can keep talking.
So you take donations of in-kind things, clothing, children's toys?
Anything that you can use, anything that a teenager, an aged-out foster child can use, we take those donations. We have two storage units full of what we consider winter clothes, so we always switch out with our volunteers, summer, winter, but yes.
Any questions?
No, I loved it. The other day I was on your site and I saw that two young men come in, and I guess they were looking for a job. You put suits on them, they were so...
Actually, if I can share that story really quickly, it's really an inspiration. We had a group home full of boys come in, and the Guardian at Lightem put in a request for one boy. Whenever I notice that there's a group home coming in, I invite them all in, and then I gather up volunteers and go, please, we got to help these kids. So I usually have an individual for every child. Well, they come in wanting, wanting, what do they call those pants that have the elastic on the bottom? Well, not the cargos, but it's the new style that they have going on, and slides where they slide in. Well, we didn't have those. And so the oldest boy, you know in group homes, they have different ages, and the oldest boy, this pretty stocky handsome young man, did not find anything. All the other ones were finding stuff. And so I started engaging in conversation with him and realized he had never put on a suit. And so we went back to the suit, and I told them, oh honey, you can look fine in this, you know, you can look great, you have a girlfriend, and just really just get to know them. He went into the fitting room with the suit on. I grabbed a shirt and a tie. When he came out, I would have never expected his response, because he came out and he was just like, I feel important, I feel great. And that was all I needed to hear. After that, every other boy that was there that didn't want the shoes I was pushing on them, or the tie, and the belts, they said, I want a suit, I want a suit. They all left with suit and tie, clothes, and we were even giving them a lesson on how to tie a tie, where to wear these suits, how to wear these suits, and it was just amazing. And so yes, I was very exhausted, but it was brilliant. It was a wonderful experience. A donor saw that on our Facebook page, and she sent in funding so we can send to the group home so they can wear the suits and go out to dinner. And so that's the influence that we have in the community, because when they see that these scenes are going on, or there's a need, like there was a need of an aged-out foster young man, he's a single father, his two-year-old was having open-heart surgery. I got a phone call, this was about three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, that the doctor says she no longer can sleep in a crib. She needs a daybed, she needs a toddler bed. Not more than five minutes, I posted that. I had a woman message me and say, I want to buy that bed. And so we did it all online, and she was from Ocala, and this was the influence of the reach that we have. A lot of our donations go to the children, and so if I get donations in, then I will, we will create an opportunity to do that. We just did a Mother's Day event so we can teach the children how to honor their single mothers, the children. And so that's pretty much what we do in the community. We have no limitations, but we do not receive any grants. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Rachel, thank you. But could you tell them how if someone wanted to donate clothes, like I have 13 grandkids?
Oh, okay.
If they want to donate clothes or...
If you go to Kids Are First, kidsherfirst.org, you will tap on the...
Two D's, right?
I'm sorry?
With two D's.
Kids, yes, with two D's. When the founder was looking for that website, I guess he needed to throw that extra D in there. Kidsherfirst.org, you will see the store, and our address is there. By the back door of Unit C5, you will see a donation bin, and so you can always call, hit me up on Messenger, or just drop off at your convenience the donations.
Yes.
How do people actually find? Do they have to know you exist? Do they have to find out through us?
We don't advertise in the general public, because our clientele is foster, orphan, and underprivileged children. We do collaborate with all the schools, the counselors, a lot of resources, if you see the list, but we don't advertise for the general public. It has to be a word for mouth. And so I want to make sure that when I have my volunteer in there, that I know someone else knows they're there, because there's only about five key holders. I don't have a huge volunteer base, because they have to be, for me, I have to train them to go into the store to meet a family. It could be me and a family with three kids, and we will have the whole store to ourselves for two hours.
There's an interesting program called the Portal of Care, it's for the state of Florida, approved by the governor. It's a system whereby all of the nonprofits can hook together, and if you need something, you send out one message, and the nonprofit that has what you need responds to you, and vice versa.
Portal of...
It's called the Portal of Care, and it's happening throughout the state of Florida right now. It's a very, it's a very important way to connect community and churches and nonprofits in one big state network, and it's approved by the state, so they support it as well. You might want to look into that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I can put you in touch with somebody.
Thank you for that. I would like that.
And I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do for foster care. I think a lot of times foster children are the forgotten children. They are the forgotten. People don't remember that they even exist sometimes. As a foster mom of 37 children myself, I fostered over 37, and I adopted four of those children from foster care. I know how it is when those children come and they have absolutely nothing. I can remember two and three o'clock in the morning getting brand-new infant babies, and all they have is a bottle of curried three-day-old milk. So the work you do is important, and I don't think you, Guardian at Lightem's and other people who work in this, in this foster care system, get the respect that they deserve, but I just want to say thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Foster care is my passion.
Thank you.
And I will definitely get this information out, and you'll hear more from me.
I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for what you've done. We have to be a voice for the voiceless, and that's kind of what we are, provide, giving them a choice in a situation that they've never had a choice in, and helping them through trauma, child-informed trauma. I tried that side, but I'm staying in my lane back in the store, because I foster too. It's not easy.
What you do helps with child-informed trauma, whether it's what your intentions are or not, when you're supplying basic needs for children.
We build relationships.
You're building relationships.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, having been an adopted child myself, this is very touching to me, what you're doing, and Madam Clerk, for the record, I'd like to donate $500 from my Bike Week funds to this organization, and I challenge other commissioners to do something as well.
I'll do the same if I have it. I don't know what I have, but I'll do it.
You have it.
All right, I got it.
Thank you. And Delgado, okay. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is, this is the public comments by for people addressing the city commission on items on the consent agenda. I have two speakers so far. First speaker is Mr. John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I forgot to put the two letters. B and P. All right, B is demolition. The gentleman came up the other day with regard to demolition of a property, and the owner got it free, and now on your agenda, there's 10 or so properties that now have a lien on their property. We have to have a standard. This is the third time something came before the commission in which a commissioner made out like a bandit, all right? So we have to have a policy that if something happens and the commissioner's going to get a free ride, we have to have some kind of rule on that. I remember when it got really upset with Shriver, when he had Sue back up into his house, and he got like $350,000 for it, and another person got like $50,000. So it was a really disproportionate amount. So I think we should have some kind of a ruling that when it involves a commissioner, and you're going to give them money, or an abance, or whatever, that we have to have rules for that. And secondly, on road resurfacing, 15 years ago, Butler was supposed to be redone on the beachside, and then about 11 years ago, we put out a bond and got like $8 million and did certain resurfacing. Butler was supposed to be done, but they took the funds and put it on Aura Street. Then about a year after that, there was another $3 million that came up, and so they decided to redo the streets, and Butler got left out again. I'm asking you to take a look at Butler. It is in terrible condition. It is right there where Jimmy John's is and where the Starlight Diner is, so it's very well-traveled. So I'm asking you to take a look at that and any other section of the city that needs the road improvement. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Yeah, several items here I want to talk about, and Mr. Nicholson also reminded me about the free pass on the demolition. I certainly hope that the city does take that up into consideration that there is no more free passes for people in certain political positions. Some of the other agenda items I wanted to speak about. Excuse me, I had a little trouble getting the agenda here. Okay, on item 8F is for the office technology. I know it's not very well defined in here, but what I'd like to see is some funds added for ligature removal on the city commission meetings. Now, most of you have no idea what I'm saying. I know I've talked to several times to Kim about the problem, but there's ligatures on the minutes that the public uses. What a ligature is, if you're not familiar with it, is where two letters join together. It's a very simple fix in the software, but it's not being addressed. But I'd like to see it addressed, because when you pull up the minutes in any other format, you're going to end up with a character missing in it when you try to convert it. If you look at it online, it's very clear. Any letters that are like S and T next to each other will all show up as a ligature. That needs to be corrected. On item 8L, okay, on the pump replacement, again, this is a topic that I've talked about numerous times to the city commission. I would like to see the city take a bolder stance, especially now that we have a new city manager, on avoiding obsolescence. Far too often do we just follow the path of least resistance and order replacements for the exact stuff you have in there, not looking, is that the best thing for us, and does it pigeonhole us into doing the same thing to the same single-source vendor over and over again, at the expense of the taxpayers. It's an industry I'm very familiar with. I spent a good portion of my life doing reliability and failure analysis studies, so I'm pretty familiar with what can happen in the industry, and I would like to see the city take a more aggressive stance towards avoiding obsolescence. I know you're having a tour of the facilities, which I'm looking forward to. I have already signed up for it, so hopefully I'll be one of the 15. On the Peabody, very much in favor of improving the air conditioning? I want to see the Peabody come back, but I would certainly like to see, with the amount of money that's being spent on chiller systems, which are rapidly becoming obsolete, and again, you're pigeonholing yourself into obsolete technologies, I would like to see us look into perhaps using alternative energy-type systems. I know I talked to Mayor Henry about this. He seemed to be in favor of the more green approach, yet we're not taking a proactive stance towards actually doing it. And I think this is an excellent opportunity, because certainly they're a lot quieter than the standard systems that are regularly available today. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South East Street. I'm here tonight to talk about 8B, permits and licensing for buildings that they are tearing down here in the city of Daytona Beach. And my comment tonight is that I was getting a lot of calls from people that lived in Zone 3, and they were saying to me that they want to know why. There was not equal treatment going on here as far as the tearing down of these buildings. There was a building there on Mary McCallbun that was dilapidated for many years. That was owned by the Tragers, but then the city tore it down. And I was reading here tonight on the agenda where they said that they're going to have some assessments going to go up here, and the people have to pay, it's going to go to the tax collectors office of Volusia, and if they don't pay these assessments, there's going to be a certificate on the property. So I feel that there should be justice across the board, and the property that sat there for years, that whole drugstore that was dilapidated and nothing was done, somebody could have got hurt because the city did nothing about it. So I'm still getting calls because some of these people that's on this list want to know why certain people, like Rick Shriver, another commissioner who sat there and is using this city to get a free ride when they have these dilapidated buildings, and they have not paid, you have to pay to tear the building down, it costs several thousand dollars, and these people shouldn't be getting a free ride. They've got several buildings up there, and the people in the community are upset about it, because we know for a fact that some deals was cut up here, and the former city manager was here, and we don't want this to happen. We want these people to pay like everybody else, and yet no free ride because they're sitting up here on this commissioner, and some of them sit here and use this commission so that they won't have to pay like the people on this list. And these people are poor. Some of them, not all of them, but they don't have anything. So why are these people getting, and the people keep calling me, Marjorie, you need to go up there and tell them. I say, don't you worry, I will tell them, and they need to. And this is why people don't pledge to a flag, because you got to have justice for everybody, not just for some. And we got a lot of buildings over there on Lollie's Avenue, and these, there's a yard next to the Daytona Times that's six feet tall. You need to do your work, that's what we pay you to do. You're sitting there collecting a check, you don't get a free ride, you got to pay like everybody else. They tore your building down, pay like everybody else.
And that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
Are there any additions or removals to the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Reed with a second by Commissioner Traeger. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved seven to zero.
Move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division on behalf of the Daytona Beach Housing Authority, Maile and Windsor Apartments, Public Use Permit. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution authorizing a public use permit for the Windsor and Maile Apartments located at 524 and 600 South Beach Street respectively, for the purpose of allowing these facilities, which are owned and operated by the Daytona Beach Housing Authority, to be considered to be legally conforming under the Land Development Code, waiving certain provisions of the LDC Articles 4 and 6 of the Land Development Code relating to density, building height, scale, and setbacks, and parking in order to accommodate the public use, granting a density bonus for the continued operation of the Windsor and the Maile Apartments, as provided in the city's comprehensive plan and providing an effective date. Some move.
Second.
Motion by... Motion by Commissioner Trager and a second by Commissioner Reed. Do we have any?
I do have a speaker. It's Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Several years ago, Pete Gamble wanted to tear these two buildings down. He had a problem. He was going throughout the hut housing, putting in meters for water and for electric, and it was very costly, but he felt that all of the residents should pay for their water and electric rather than just let it balloon and waste them. But the Windsor and the Maile, he couldn't do that. So he was trying to get rid of the property. So I spoke to the new hut housing director and she wouldn't even hear about it. She said, we got that property, we're not giving it up. Then I found out that she is giving it up. With a loan that she's getting within a certain number of years, the city loses that property and it goes to the person who's loaning her the money. Will these abances and whatnot go with the property when it goes to private hands? I know we want to be fair and we want to help those that can't afford it, but I'm sure the person who gets this will probably convert it over. It is the most valuable piece of property we have on the river. In Miami, those same apartments would go for a million to $10 million apiece. And these people are paying, what, $45, $50 a month rent? We are losing tens of millions of dollars, not only on this property, but the surrounding areas, because we don't have the volume that we should have in that location. Everything is location, location, location. And that marina came in, what, second best along the East Coast? It is a very valuable location and we're not putting it to its best use. So I'm sure that when this guy gets hold of it, he will put it to its best use. Will these rulings follow the property or will he have to meet the new codes? Thank you.
Is there any way that we could get an update on Housing Authority to get some questions regarding Windsor Maile answered a little bit, something like this? And also, Mr. Nicholson, in the back of my mind, I'm recalling something about a restricted use and only for the public good. There was something like that with Windsor Maile, but I can double check that for you, where it was restricted only for public use. But is there any way? I thought at some point the mayor had requested that, or that they were going to have a regular updates to give us.
They were planning on having a regular updates. As you are aware, the Housing Authority Director has resigned from her position. Deputy City Manager Morris can provide some clarity on this item, so I'm going to ask him to come up and just say that this is, this item deals with their non-conforming usages, but this will be a property that will have these uses on and they will go for. But I'll let him bring some clarity to the question that just was brought forward.
Commissioner Delgado, members. This request tonight is to allow the Windsor Maile to go on in their present configuration. The buildings were built in 1973. There's a financing entity coming in to rework the apartments to the benefit of the residents and the residents will continue to occupy the property. There is a timeline that the Housing Authority elected where the property owner will change in terms of the financing cost, but right now what this does is take these units, which really need rehabilitation completely, and they will be rehabilitated correctly, to update the housing for all the folks that presently occupy the apartments. There will be shifting internally as apartments are reworked and so on, but ultimately the residents that are there will continue to reside there. The request before you tonight is because the buildings were built prior to some provisions in the Land Development Code pursuant to density as well as height. And those requests are really incorporated here to cause these buildings to be conforming, which the commission can do as a part of the request that's before you tonight. By that, what it means is that if the buildings somehow suffered damage, they could be rebuilt and restored to their current form, their current density, their current levels. That's the question that's before you tonight. The Housing Authority is the owner of the property. As you know, the Housing Authority is separate and apart from the commission and the subject of updates and so on relating to matters other than this really aren't relevant to this particular request, but what's important about this request is that this allows the buildings to be completely updated, improved, and the life of the people that live there may be much more comfortable for the time that they'll be there, which is, I believe, in excess of 20 years under the current program. So this is a way, without additional expense from the Housing Authority, excuse me, or the city, the housing, that's an affordable housing supply is updated and brought current for the people that currently live there and subsequent people that will follow as those tendencies end and new people come in under the affordable housing approach. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion?
And I have no other speakers, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right, hearing nothing, all in favor? Wait, do we have a, yeah, we already had the motion, right?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 9A passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9B. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Masonova Commerce Park, Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes in relation to 14.6 plus or minus acres of land generally located south of Mason Avenue, west of Nova Road, north of Madison Avenue, and east of Briarwood Drive, amending the future land use map designations of portions of the subject properties as follows. 3.4 plus or minus acres from Level 1 residential to retail, 2.4 plus or minus acres from Level 2 residential to retail, 2.9 plus or minus acres from Level 2 residential to park recreation, and 5.9 plus or minus acres from Level 1 residential to park recreation, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. So move.
Motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers on this item.
Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I believe the item passes seven to zero.
The public hearing is set for September 8th. Moving on to item 9C. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Hand Avenue, Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statute in relation to 22.2 plus or minus acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Hand Avenue, amending the future land use map designation of 4.9 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Volusia County Commercial to City Level 2 Residential, amending the future land use designation of 17.3 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Level 2 Residential, amending the future land use Element Neighborhood S development policy with regard to the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May, a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the commission? We have nothing from the audience, correct?
No, no other speakers.
All right. Hearing nothing. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes seven to zero.
The second public hearing is set for September 8th. Moving on to item 9D. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Zeta, Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statute in relation to 23.2 plus or minus acres of land generally located approximately 2,500 feet northeast of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPJA Boulevard, amending the future land use map designation of 5.3 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Level 1 residential to mixed use, amending the future land use designation of 10.9 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Level 2 residential to mixed use, amending the future land use designation of 7 plus or minus acres of the subject property from office transition to mixed use, amending the future land use Element Neighborhood U development policy with regard to the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Second.
A motion from Commissioner May, a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions and no other speakers.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Matter passes seven to zero.
The second public hearing is set for September 8th. Moving on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Zeta, Rezoning Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 23.2 acres of property generally located approximately 2,500 feet northeast of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPJA Boulevard from Single Family Residential 5, that's SFR 5, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Project Zeta Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with a variety of residential and non-residential principal uses and certain additional temporary uses, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
A motion from Commissioner Reed, a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have anyone?
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant, for any questions and no other speakers.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Matter passes seven to zero.
The second public hearing is set for September 8th. Moving on to item 10B. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Beach, LPGA 711 Plan Development Agreement, Rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 2.3 plus or minus acres of property located at 2,100 LPJA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Beach LPGA 711 Plan Development Agreement, authorizing use of the property as a convenience store with fueling facilities and a car wash, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. So move.
A motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And this one's first reading, so I don't have any public speaking.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. 10B passes seven to zero.
And the public hearing is set for July 21st. And that was our last agenda item. And so now we'll move on to comments and inquiries from the city commission. We start with Commissioner Cantu tonight.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
You're up.
I'm up. Actually, I want to call Jim Morris. Did he leave? Oh, okay. I wanted to call him up because in our LDC, it requires all sidewalks to be enforced and actually the sidewalks are to be enforced, I think, before that building is done, correct? Okay.
I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. My question that I'm responding to is the process employed when you have a new subdivision plat coming in for recording and sidewalks required, particularly this applies to residential subdivisions. The Land Development Code has a provision which requires sidewalks to be built on both sides of the street. The question that's being asked is the timing of that. And the Land Development Code has the opportunity that permits us to bond construction of sidewalks. It also has a provision that would require sidewalks to be built before the houses are ever constructed on the lots. The logistical issue with the second approach of building the sidewalk before you build the house is subsequent to that. The house is built, the lot is graded, trucks are going back and forth. A cement truck can weigh 70,000 pounds. It will break apart any sidewalk that you build. So if you build it prior to constructing the home, most likely the sidewalk will be rebuilt after the fact, so it's built twice. And so there's another way to approach the problem in that you have some amount of time where people have the opportunity to build the lots in a subdivision and then ultimately to build the entire sidewalk system by bonding the work. The reason for the difference in the approach is to first avoid demolition of something that has never been used for service where there's really no residents yet in a subdivision. But you also have the situation where as time goes along and the subdivision gets built, you may have it where open lots haven't been built yet, four or five years has passed. Now you live in a subdivision with an incomplete sidewalk system. So there has to be a day and a time that the people that live there live in a subdivision with a complete sidewalk system. And y'all may remember, I'm thinking it's about nine months ago, there was a question from some subdivisions where construction had stopped as prior to the boom times that we have now, and there were subdivisions out there where sidewalks simply stopped at the edge of a lot and didn't get finished. In that case, the city wound up coming in and paying separate from a developer to construct some sidewalks to finish some sidewalk networks. So what's being suggested in a phase of Mosaic now, and I think we're going to, the city attorney may speak to some issues as to what we're going to do with the Land Development Code and something we have called a contract for plat recording, where in the instance of Mosaic, they're going to place a four-year bond to guarantee the construction of sidewalks in the subdivision. They will build sidewalks as they build the homes. The sidewalks will be built after the homes are complete, the yards are installed, and it's a sequential thing in terms of what happens there. So the sidewalk system gets built as the developer goes along, but in case they aren't finished within a four-year period, there is a bond that will last for four years to guarantee the cost of construction of the sidewalks. And those sidewalks not built prior to the expiration of the bond life of four years will be caused to be built by the developer or by the city using the developer's money as proceeds from the bond. We are increasing the percentage from 120% to 140% of construction cost to cover the time period that will pass and the potential for inflation that occurs from today, day one to the end of the fourth year, so that you've got a mechanism to allow reasonable construction, process, and timing, but also to assure that residents that are there, and perhaps all the lots haven't been built at the end of that four-year period, have a complete sidewalk system then. It's a fair question to say, well, what about those ones where the lots aren't built? Aren't they going to be put in the position that we're trying to avoid right now? And the case is, that's true. But at some point in time, you have to say, we're going to complete a system, have it finished, and those people that haven't built yet, which is ordinarily going to be the developer of the subdivision, will simply then have to build and rebuild the sidewalk if they built, let's say in year six, when the sidewalks were all completed in year four. It's a balancing act of private interest and construction and public interest in terms of a complete sidewalk system that meets the public safety needs. And that's the approach that we're taking as a staff. Commissioner Cantu had asked some questions about sidewalk construction. Manager had discussion with staff. The city attorney's office and I have worked together with planning staff to arrive in an approach like this, and we're talking about some modification to the Land Development Code to further address the subject, as I've explained it, and you'll see that a little bit later.
So we can guarantee with this bond that the taxpayers or the city will not have to fund the finishing of the sidewalk.
As near as practical life lets us do that, we can guarantee it. There's a financial guarantee. The bond will be monitored. It's calculated to pay the entire cost of the sidewalk and we don't intend to reduce the bond as we go through time, rather maintain the full amount until the sidewalks are built. So you have some surplus there potentially to do that. The main thing is to make sure the bond is continually renewed and we will monitor that.
And the plain and simple, as they're building a house, the sidewalk will go in right afterwards.
Yes, ma'am. They will build the sidewalk as a part of completing the house. It's simply the latter part of the construction, not the earlier part of the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henry?
Just two quick things, and that is Wawa opened up last Friday? Friday. And Commissioner Cantu, city manager, assistant city manager, and the mayor and myself were there to welcome them to the neighborhood. It was a wonderful time. The store is beautiful. Go by and support the new Wawa. Also, I want to congratulate Commissioner Cantu on the nice, very nice Fourth of July celebration. The vets, you just could see the pride and they were beaming and it was such a wonderful affair for them especially. The parade was nice. I got the opportunity to walk, to ride with Commissioner Reed over here and we had assistant city manager, she was driving and we're still here, so we're thankful, we're thankful for that. We weren't sure if we were going to make it, but we did. But it was a wonderful time and we honored Officer Hopson Bethune, the late Officer Hopson Bethune, and I think it was a wonderful affair and his family was just so honored and so blessed and overwhelmed. And I hope to get to see more opportunities like that to honor good people in our community. And those are my only comments tonight.
Can I say, can we have a Korean War veteran stand up right now?
We're here.
Let's give them applause. He is 90 years old. And then we have Terry Gordon, excuse me, our Gold Star Mothers, she was part of our, they were both on our parade.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to echo Commissioner Henry's comments. I really enjoyed myself. It was really a privilege and an honor to be there on Sunday morning. And she neglected to say that the young man that was honored was the grandson of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. And so it was really, really nice for someone that I personally knew to be honored on that day as well. So it was a wonderful celebration. Kudos, Commissioner Cantu. Commissioner May and I chipped in and had a pool party for the children at the Aquatic Center. And Commissioner May, we haven't spoken because we can't speak about things until we're in public, but there was a lot of food left over. I think the overcast kept the children from coming, and it's been suggested by the Assistant City Manager and the City Manager that perhaps we would have a summer splash back-to-school party, if you are in agreement with that, with the, okay, with the food that was left, very good. And then I'd also like to also echo that the Lucas Foundation, we went there to support that on Saturday as well, Harold Lucas honoring his family and giving scholarships to young people. And there's a meeting room that can be used by groups in his foundation. It's right there on the corner of Jefferson and Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. He took the property where his family's home was purchased or built and turned that into a foundation to honor his family. So several of us were there on Saturday, the manager and Assistant City Manager. And I left the pool party to go to that foundation. So it was wonderful, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Treger?
First of all, I'd like to thank Chief Karim Young and his troops for successful apprehending of that guy and bringing him back here without any problems, I hope. And can you give us an update on Officer Rayner?
Sorry. Sometimes it's better to be silent, I guess. Did anybody hear?
Yes.
Thank you.
Karim Young, Chief of Police. I can tell you that he has made great improvement. The family's asked us to kind of, they don't want us to be too specific for security reasons as far as his status currently, but he has made quite a bit of improvement. And I just want to thank you all for your support over the last couple of weeks, because, you know, you all were there, a lot of you showed up at the hospital. You were there within, you know, minutes of it occurring, and it was definitely noticed, not just by me, but by the men and women of the department. So it just made all of us feel good to just see how the city, the city as a whole, just rallied around us as a department. So we appreciate it.
Well, we thank you so much, and give him our best wishes, please.
Will do.
Thank you. The other thing is, I received a couple of emails from some ladies over wanting to know if we can have a walkway across from Sea Spray to the other side. They said it's getting dangerous with people. I see there's an FDOT meeting. Is that something they would be discussing at that meeting that's coming up?
They can bring it up.
At the Plaza Resort and Spa, 600 North Atlantic Avenue, July 15th, 5:30 to 7:30. So maybe if you're interested, you would want to come there. And I'm so glad we got through everything, the hurricane, everything. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner May?
Okay, so a couple of updates, please, if possible. A while back, we spoke about, and maybe we have made progress or have not made progress, on what are we doing when we have people who repeatedly violate citations, meaning they keep doing the same thing over and over? They get a violation, they fix the violation, 30 days later, they do it again, get another violation of citation. Are we doing anything with chronic violators, I guess, offenders, anything like that on the books?
If it's a separate violation, they can be recited. If it's the same violation that's continuing, the code board orders typically have a running fine until the property is brought into compliance. Captain Lee, you want to speak to this?
The reason I'm bringing this up is that I'm having residents call me about the same people doing the same things 30 to 60 days later in the same way.
Right. So Scott Lee, I'm a captain with the police department overseeing neighborhood services. So we are also frustrated with that as well. Our staff is, and what we've done is we've worked with the legal team to try to adjust our procedures. Mainly, what we're doing is, we're doing as effective job as we can as documenting the first occurrence. And if it's not corrected within the timeframe that's initially given, they're taken before the magistrate or the code board. If they correct before that hearing date, we're still in some of those cases where we believe it's going to reoccur, or it has been reoccurring, we're asking for what we call a will fine, which is basically a finding from the magistrate or the code board stating that, yes, they were in non-compliance at one point, and they have now come into compliance. What that does is that gives us the ability to bring them straight back to the magistrate or the code board if they repeat that violation beyond that point. So that's one way of addressing it. If they've already been before the magistrate or the code board for the violation, and there's a finding of non-compliance, that gives us the ability to bring them back as a repeat violation, even if we didn't get the will fine order, because maybe it went on longer into the, while it was in the jurisdiction of the board. The third thing that we're looking at, doing is that those cases where, what you're describing really, is where people, there are, for some reason, there are people in our community that have to be told, like every month, they got to mow the grass, which unfortunately, I would think that's something that would be common sense, and people would stay on top of it, but they just don't. So what we're trying to do is that we're trying to monitor those cases, especially the ones where we see a history of that reoccurring. And that case where it's continuing past the date, we're making sure that we're revamping our notice of, notice of, or not notice of hearing, I'm sorry, notice of violations to inform them that, once they, once they correct the issue, it needs to remain corrected. And at that point, we're picking a window of time or working with, deciding a window of time of when to monitor that. And if it continues or repeats after the date in which they were supposed to have corrected it, we're working that as same as a normal case. So we would bring it back before the magistrate or the code board, and then present the facts and ask either for the will fine if it's been corrected, or move on towards a regular case, like where we would, the code board would give them some time to correct the issue. If they didn't, we could ask for a fine at that point.
So the question that keeps coming up is, how long does this process take? It sounds like it kind of perpetuates, that's number one. Number two, is this is not just designated for people with lawns. We're speaking about businesses also who decide to disturb the peaceful rest of residents as well, correct?
Right. It's a variety of violations. I picked, you know, landscape because it's a very common one. Parking on vehicles, sound violations, these types of issues are things that repeat continuously. There are some nuisance properties where that's occurring, and we are trying to either address those more firmly, or like I said, build a case where we can show that it's a continuous and ongoing kind of act. And that's kind of been the struggle. And we, the answer to your question, I mean, you've asked, we've, I know you and I have spoken about that repeatedly, is what is the timeframe? The reason why we can never give you a specific timeframe is because each case is kind of independent from other cases. There's no standard answer to that. So we give a reasonable time to correct. And if it's not corrected in that reasonable time, we can proceed before the code board or the magistrate. And some of that depends on what the violation is. If somebody's trying to replace a roof, for example, we're not going to give them 30 days correct. If they didn't correct it, bring them right before the magistrate. If they're, if they're applying for that permit, they're working through that process, they're making an honest effort towards fixing the issue, or working to get their finances straight to be able to do that, then we're going to give them that time. On other things like landscape, art cars, sounds, those timeframes are going to be much smaller, because for instance, amplified sound, you don't need a month to stop amplifying your sound. You need a shorter timeframe, like an hour, to turn off your sound. And that's, that's, that's how we gauge reasonableness, based on what the violation is, how it's affecting the surrounding area, the different times of year and when it's occurring. Does that help to answer some of the questions?
It does. I've actually been asked to come, I've actually been asked to go somewhere at roughly 1:00 in the morning. I'm not going alone, I'm taking someone with me, hopefully you, to listen to what the neighborhood has to experience at about 1:00 in the morning. And I said, I sure, I'm willing to do it.
Right, and I'm happy to do that as well. And we will address issues if we observe them.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that. I might need you again for something, though. Okay, not yet, though. All right. The next thing I have here is going to be, are we, the Affordable Housing Update Report? We're probably going to get something along those lines. We've been working on something, correct, with the Affordable Housing Report?
In reference to what we're doing internally, you're not talking about the Housing Authority?
No, just us.
Yes.
Any ideas when?
I can't give you an exact date when. Staff is looking at all of the affordable housing that we're doing throughout the city. You keep approving items, but based on what you're saying, you want some type of a?
I'm still looking for a definition, I guess, of what we need, where it's, where we think it should go, things like that, average cost, et cetera. And then how many units we actually, and what type of units we need. Okay? And I thought we had a report that we had commissioned, we had agreed to get a study done, et cetera.
You're talking about the study. We will have something coming back, I think, was it Joanne? Yes, we will have something. I can't give you the date, but I will email it, but I did receive an email from Joanne in our procurement area, so you should have something coming back to you all.
Then back to the police or code, not sure which one exactly, but on Veterans Bridge, as well as the corner of Main Street and A1A, I'm noticing in the evening times and morning times sometimes, that there are people charging their telephones using the bridge, the Veterans Bridge, little plug charges, and they're charging their telephones, also on the corner of Main and A1A. That's something there. Also, underneath the bridge, and it happens to be on the east side of Veterans Bridge, underneath the walkway, there are, there are needles. And there are people sleeping there. So I'm wondering, is that something that's county based, city based, police enforcement based, video surveillance based, hours of operation, anything like that that we can do to help?
Again, Scott Lee, for the police department. That area you're referring to by the bridge there is county property. We usually work with Public Works and their connections with the county to try to resolve issues that are happening there. Typically, when we find an open outlet where somebody's charging a device that doesn't need to be on for something, we would just communicate with Public Works. Public Works would shut that outlet off till it was needed to be used, or they would put some type of locking mechanism on it so it can't be used. The problem here is that they're going to have to communicate that to the county and try to get them probably address that, but we can look at that. And if you know exactly where the outlets are, that might help. Send me a picture of it or something.
What about the safety concern under the bridge? And again, also note that the Chamber of Commerce on the west side of the bridge is experiencing similar issues in the morning times when they come to work, but specifically on the east side of the bridge, there are residents who are utilizing that to walk, to exercise condos that live right there, not safe.
On the east side of the bridge you're referring?
Underneath, yes.
We will, I know that we work to get some no trespass signs in those areas up. I will go down there myself and take a look at it. If there's something that law enforcement needs to do, then we'll communicate that to the patrol shift so they can address it.
I'm talking about the walkway underneath, the wooden, the public one.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. It's going to be best if I go look at what the problem is and see what kind of solution we can wrap around it.
Let me know when I'll go with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So charging stations, the bridge. All right, let's talk about, let's talk about water. So right here, I always like to come to you well prepared. So for about two years now, I've been focusing on the waterways. I think of our river as the 95, right, of the water. And I'd like to see more traffic. I'd like to see more things happening on the water. But to do that, we have to clean it up. Part of the issue is that we have copious amounts of boats, more slightly offshore, Epithium Point and Marina Point. Now, they're there, but I'm not sure how they're cleaning out the bulge. I have no clue how they're doing this. We have no permitting, we have no licensing, we have nothing that's coming around to clean the waterways. That's number one. Number two, I recognize that we have code and the water patrols, and that they are cleaning out the boats that have sunk or have been left derelict or they're on the sandbars. I think we're doing a great job. I recognize it was a grant. More, more are occurring right now. I'm getting pictures every single week. So to help, I'll both say one of the things, that we have a fantastic rowing club there, we have the little sailboat club there, we have the three-bird paddleboard there, we have people who actually live onboard in our marina. So as a courtesy to them, and just for safety reasons, So as a courtesy to them, and just for safety reasons, I think we need to start working on it more diligently. There are a couple ordinances that came down, and then also legislature came down from the state under Rick Scott on January 1, 2017. These particular ordinances deal with specifically. The goal is to, the main idea is to protect the environment from boater impacts such as raw sewage that's being dumped in our river right now, dumping and seagrass destruction while keeping the harbor clean of derelict boats. It addresses all of this. So we actually have legal standing to pursue something. Also, the law is designed to regulate pumpouts and keep derelict boats from cluttering the harbor. And right now, when you go over Veterans Bridge, which many people are using, I see at least two. When I go over Main Street, I see one. There's another section between Main Street and Oak Ridge as well. A few boats are there. So you and I are aware of it. I have the legislation. My question is, what can we actually do? We've discussed a mooring field. We're going to meet with some of the water patrols, some of the water people. I would like for us to try to figure out what we can do with the area. To that end, I'm going to put together an information gathering group. These are people who are directly impacted by the water. They live on the water, they work on the water, they utilize the water, they have different events on the water and associations. Then I'd like to come back to the commission with some of the things that they've seen, they've found, and they're all intimately aware of what needs to be done. They've traveled with some recommendations. What are your thoughts?
Well, we're fully in support of all of that. You know, we're committed to cleaning up the waterways. That's why we committed to this prior to COVID. We've removed in excess of 20 boats from the water. And most, if not all of that has been through grants from the state. We've been fully reimbursed for most of that money. And it's a pretty expensive endeavor. And then there's some unique aspects about boats. It's not, you know, we have a car that's abandoned in the roadway. It's a lot easier for us to take that and tow it away and keep it for safekeeping until the person comes for it. In the waterway, boats, there, you know, there's a property value that somebody has to that, you know, and there's a process that the state requires us to go through before we can remove it, and that does slow some of it down. I can tell you that we had a good system working prior to COVID. COVID put all of that on a standstill. The money opened back up, and we've started that process again. We've had some internal hiccups that we've smoothed out. And you guys should be seeing an agenda item very soon for another removal of, I think, seven vessels. I think it's seven vessels. Oh, I'm sorry, we got two of them already, so I think it's five.
Are we dealing with the mooring issue? Because there are some things we can do with regard to us having a vessel that goes around to help pump it out, and that it's mandatory that they pump out their boats.
We've had at least one meeting with the folks at the marina to discuss a mooring field, where those areas might work. And we can start that conversation and work on that if that's what you guys decide and what the manager would like us to do. We can at least explore what our options are.
So are we comfortable with me getting some information, doing some information gathering, and bringing it back to you? Makes our lives a lot easier.
Sure. If you're not familiar, the mooring field would give us the ability to have a little bit more regulation on the waterway, which means that we'd have a little bit more control about where people would be able to anchor, or it would allow us to be able to enact ordinances that would be able to empower some of that. And I think the first step is, you know, giving people a place to be able to park their boat. If you don't have that, you really can't do the rest.
And we need to work with the state to obtain submerged land leases and permitting for that as well.
Absolutely. It's a complicated process, yes.
But you know what other cities have done? For example, Boca Chica Basin, eastern and western portions, Cal Key Channel, Key West Harbors, the Key West Seaplane Basin. So we have places we can go and say, how did you do this? And how successful?
I'll double check for you, but I even think we have staff at the marina who's been in some of those jurisdictions and have been a participant in that program.
Wonderful. So I'll move forward with my little information gathering group. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to West ISB, please. So on East ISB, things are still moving forward with the TPO, and I think it's going to be fabulous once it starts. Date may have been pushed back a bit, but that's all right. We have our next meeting coming up, and then we'll maybe take a little break, but we'll see what happens. Let's talk about West ISB for just a moment. So we focused on the bridge, we focused on East ISB. Is there anything that we can do for the businesses, the roadway, the sidewalks, especially on West ISB? The comment that was made to me was that Beach Street has been redone a number of times. Orange Avenue, as it heads into Beach Street, Magnolia, but not, not the West ISB little corridor. Is there anything that we can do with regards to that? Do we have a plan? Have we ever had a plan with regard to West ISB? Any thoughts? Anybody know?
Well, how far on West ISB are you talking?
I'm thinking Ridgewood to, Ridgewood to Beach Street.
Because we do have something, they're coming in increments in doing West ISB. I don't know what the holdup is or where they are in the process, but they've been coming east on West ISB towards Beach Street.
Okay.
I think the last increment may have ended at Lincoln.
Okay.
And ISB right there by the PEC.
Okay.
But there is a process.
Do we have a plan? So we actually have a, we have a plan that says, and this thing is coming closer.
Correct. And I'm thinking because the new city manager is not familiar.
Yeah, that's right.
He can get the information for you, but there is something.
Okay, so I'd like to know roughly what that looks like, what the plan is, timelines, when I can tell the businesses on West ISB, they can expect to see something, or at least give them some information. Then the other thing too is the sidewalks, and I bring it up again, along Palmetto and the corner of ISB. Not good. And I recognize that patchworking something means it's fixed, but it's still not, it's not pleasant, and still not entirely safe. So keeping that in mind, if we could take a look at the sidewalks, they're well-traveled, good footpath as it heads down to the river. Okay, moving on. So I appreciate the fact, hopefully the mayor's listening, I appreciate the fact that we are pro arts and that we're trying to develop an art district, art community, and to bring more arts to our local community. Two years ago, roughly August of 2019, I believe, I went to St. Petersburg, and when I came back, I brought back a plan, the St. Petersburg Arts Alliance. We spoke about a commission. We got some commitments from the city manager with regard to what we can do, create a nonprofit, fund them a nonprofit to an extent, have a relationship with business as well as the nonprofit, and we support them. And then it stopped. So now we're back in that vein, but we do have something that we can work with. While I was there, I did notice something. I noticed that they had covered their electrical boxes, their power units. We did that on Magnolia. Daytona One did it as well, and one Daytona did it as well. I'd like to know, can we do that throughout the city? So I really appreciate the fact that Commissioner Reed did the flags. I think they're fantastic. Is there any way that we could do something throughout the CRAs using the utility boxes or the power boxes and get some sort of unified theme that is unique to each area as we see fit? But it's something that can be done quickly. It doesn't have to take a year or two or three. This can be done relatively quickly. Do we have any thoughts on that?
I do. I like the idea, Commissioner May. I've seen, they're called wraps. And I've seen them. There's a beautiful, it's either a butterfly at Daytona One, as well as a, oh, what's that plant in front of my house? It's a flower. And it reminds me of Hawaii. And it just really, really, yeah, my, thank you, I have a hibiscus in front of my house, Jesus. But it just, it just makes something that's not as attractive, attractive. I think we have a few on Ridgewood, and I don't know who did those, but I think it really would be more aesthetically pleasing.
I believe the ones on Ridgewood.
If those odd electrical boxes had something on.
The ones on Ridgewood, Ridgewood, I think, are county-based.
Okay.
And I think they're crosswalk signals, and they're designed for safety, right? To give people an idea.
Why don't we do a competition or something, let schoolkids design, and pick some winning designs or something, you know? Open it up, let people do. Why don't we open it up and just let people do like a competition and pick, you know, the six best designs to do it in the zone, or let, you know, people? I like that, I always liked that idea of opening it up to the community and letting people kind of, you know, design something cool and train it. You can change it every couple of years. I don't think those wraps, if it's the same process like cars, I don't think they're, they're in the hundreds of dollars, I would imagine, per unit at most. I don't think they're all that expensive. I don't know how many boxes we have to cover. Maybe we could open up to kids to design one. I mean, schools in that area, I mean, anything like that, I think would be a good way of finding something that's unique. You can change it pretty often, and it gets community involvement. So I mean, that would be something that I would, I would think that we could do. And, you know, you can even have people vote on the website, vote on the News Journal website if we need more exposure, something like that, to get it done. So that would be my thought.
I like all of that. I particularly like what Commissioner May said in regards to there being a theme for the area, so that it stays in line with what we want, some kind of guidance, that that area, you know, what's the history of that area, that it would reflect, and then they would submit their artwork.
Right. And that the community who has to see it every day agrees with what they're looking at every single day when they're going back and forth.
It's taking ownership. They'll have some skin in the game.
So what would we have to do, Mr. City Manager, to move this forward?
That's true. We'll bring back a proposal and plan for you all to implement your request.
Okay.
We'll find out which department will lead that charge for you.
Okay. And then, as we move on, yes, I attended the pool party. Thank you very much to Chester. Great music. I was like, hey, Chester, give me some songs, I need to dance to something, number one. Then also tomorrow will be the last day of the started-up program at Bethune-Cookman, so I was one of the mentors dealing with the students. They came to my business, they worked with me, they came to city commission as well to understand what local government is and what we do. And tomorrow, they're doing their presentation. So I'm hoping they do well and make me very proud. So thank you so very much, and I think that that is it. Also, thank you for the garbage cans on MLK and the surrounding areas and keeping that area very neat. It's a nice complement to the new streets we have. So thank you so much.
Commissioner May, I did just look at my emails while I was up there. The Affordable Housing Consultant, RFP, it's been worked on by Joanne and Mr. Morris. So I'll give you the timelines of how that's going and where we're going to go with it. But you all made a request prior to my arrival to have a consultant in the RFP document I do have in my emails. And so I'll try to figure out what's the timeline of bringing that person on and reviewing those RFPs.
Just one more thing. You know, we have a farmer's market that happens every Saturday morning, 7:00 AM to about 1:00. And I would very much like, if we could get you some flyers, if you could please tell the local community, because we do have our marketing efforts with the DDA, set on the DDA. But I feel as though the farmer's market, it's something that the local residents can walk to, it's something that they can bring their goods to. I would very much like to see it grow from a local community level. So you might see me coming to your neighborhood and just saying, hey, please come, because it's a really good thing, as well as with the pool party, is let people know. All right? Thank you so much.
If I might add, Mr. Vice Mayor tonight, and let's reemphasize the community meetings that are going to be happening regarding the COVID recovery funds. It's on your list?
Yes.
As well as the Love Band will be performing at Midtown this weekend for the concert series, 7:00 PM, Daisy Stockton Park.
All right. And then I guess I'll speak as my commissioner capacity. The only thing I wanted to talk about briefly was just the, I think we are very close to having almost a crisis in the morale of our emergency response personnel, especially law enforcement. When you look at the events that have kind of happened, you had Bike, you had the Truck Week, then you had this shooting, which is probably the first time there's been something like that in several decades. And I just know from speaking with various unnamed law enforcement officers that, you know, there's, it's just been a very difficult time for them. The turnover rate is alarmingly high. We're having difficulty, from what I understand, attracting and maintaining some of the, you know, new recruits or getting the top people to come here. And anytime you have that much turnover in an institute, I don't know the numbers, but I imagine it takes, like in any profession, years to get good at your job. And at that point, we as a city have invested a tremendous amount in training these officers. And then if they become unhappy, disenfranchised, feel unsupported, or just simply are offered a massive pay differential elsewhere, they leave. So, you know, I think that we need to be sure that this time, next time we discuss the budget and how we pay our officers and our first responders, and we go into negotiation, I think we need to keep that first and foremost in mind. And I don't want to step over the line and intrude in the collective bargaining process because I understand that's how that's done. But I think we need to be very mindful of what we need to do to keep our talent here, to recruit top talent, to keep us safe, and maintain the investment we have in the men and women who work with the city. So I hope that that's a value that we all share as commissioners, I'm sure it is. And I would like to, you know, make sure that we, if that is a value that we all share, which I'm, again, sure it is, that we convey that to those of the staff that are doing the negotiation on behalf of the city, to make sure that we try to be incredibly competitive as a city when it comes to what we pay and not just new first responders, but existing first responders. That's really all I wanted to say about that. Mr. Mayor in Cyberland, do you want to sign in?
Sure, of course. You guys, I hope it looks like everybody's good. Thank you, Commissioner Delgado, for doing a fantastic job of moving this meeting forward. Lot has been said tonight. First thing, affordable housing. And I, too, am looking forward to us hiring a consultant. That's really what that is about, getting a consultant to empower us basically, to basically be able to have a housing trust fund if we choose to do that. It's one of the things that it would enable us to do, as well as assign linkage fees. So those are some things that we had talked about as it relates to affordable housing. Of course, the last consultant that we had said in all certain terms that we needed affordable housing for certain, he stopped short of the exact number that we needed, but he certainly said that we were in dire need of affordable housing, as most municipalities are. So we are hopeful that whoever the consultant is can give us, you know, some idea on the numbers that we need, but most importantly, that they'll be able to empower us with the facts that we need to implement some of the plans that we have discussed. As it relates to the idea of an arts alliance, appreciate you bringing that up again tonight. It's part of the reason that I brought it up last week, as a part of our ability to use recovery funds. And I was going to mention those dates, but since the manager hasn't made his remarks, I'll leave that to him. But many people, we have had, over the last two years, of course, COVID happened, we knew that you wouldn't have an arts alliance. But I've been meeting with folks as part of the Beachside Action Committee. I've met with folks in Midtown. We have folks on both Main Street and Beach Street. And so at the next commission meeting, on this, I believe it's the 16th, or whatever that date is, is coming, it's not the 16th, but the next commission meeting, I will have a detailed report to discuss with you all. And it was at that point that I was going to ask the commission, because, you know, I've repeatedly talked about this for at least a year, but I didn't want us to rush into it. You know, you can oftentimes have a plan to do things and you rush into it. So what I've been doing is building, not the momentum, but stakeholders having conversations with these various parties. And now I think that we're at a point where we can introduce something to the commission that will give the staff an idea of sort of what the community sort of believes. And a part of it does relate to something that Commissioner Delgado, you talked about a competition using kids. We've talked about some of the same things, not just using, you know, we might have, allow kids to do window paintings, then have competitions for who's the best. But I don't want to get into it tonight because I would belabor the point of the 16th, of the next meeting. But I certainly think that we are at a point where we're ready to move forward, but I also want us to be at a point where we can discuss this as it relates to being able to fund, especially Midtown and Beach Street, out of recovery funds. I think Main Street, as I said at the last meeting, could fund itself. Very happy about the Harold Lucas Center, think that's a great thing. I, too, echo Commissioner Delgado's sentiments. I want to remind our community that we have a great law enforcement team. And most importantly, I want to remind everyone that we have a great chief and senior staff of law enforcement officers who are doing an outstanding job. And I would admonish everyone in the community to continue to take our cues as it relates to this situation from our chief. The chief of Daytona Beach, Mr. Young, is proving himself daily and with each incident to be up to speed and the person that we should be leaning on during these times. But in our leaning, I want to continue to encourage the community to not only pray for our law enforcement officers, but to do the things that we've been doing to strengthen our law enforcement community, through prayer, through financial support. And finally, I think it's important that we also, I just want to remind the city manager and staff, I'm not sure where we are as it relates to an RFP for an internal auditor, someone to help us to hire an internal auditor, which we approved or directed staff to do before we got, before Mr. Fager joined us. And with that being said, it's a great time to be in Italy, and you all will be so extremely proud of the Statuary Fund Committee and the work that we've done. And while I haven't seen the statue yet, it's just a matter of time. Saturday, we will bless the statue, and I will take lots of photos. It's being documented. There will be a, in order for our children to be taught about this, the whole thing is being, we have photographers here, the whole nine yards is going to be documented, will be ultimately a educational curriculum that we will be able to hopefully share with the school districts throughout the state of Florida. So the life of Dr. Bethune is receiving the credit that it needs. And I think, I don't know if we ever pointed out that, I think it requires commission action for us to agree to be cosponsors of the statue when it comes to Daytona Beach. So, Mr. Manager, if you could reach out to Ms. Loman, or even, let me see, Daytona State or Bethune and the county, that's, those are the four that we want to be the sponsors. Doesn't require money, but I think it does require an agreement on our part to, at least the commission needs to acknowledge that we accept, you know, this responsibility essentially of hosting. And that said, again, thank you to one and all, and good night.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. The financial, sorry, sorry, the financial responsibility, do you have any idea how much that would be? I'm just curious.
I have no idea.
For the sponsorship?
How much it would be. That will ultimately be up to the commission, but we will suggest some thoughts at the next meeting, but I don't. Commission will make the decision, but I do think that it should be something that is well-funded in order to make, make it something that I think Midtown, Downtown can be proud of. If we're going to embrace an arts district and we're going to embrace a mural project, we don't want it to be sloppy and poorly done. And I think this is an ideal way to expend those, some of those funds to express our history, our culture. I mean, we've got a Main Street that has a lot of different, a variety of heritage and a history. And the same can be said as it relates to Midtown. I think that those funds are an ideal way to say that this is a way that we want to help Midtown to recover. We have the Black Heritage Trail, I think it should be tied to that. So, no, I don't have that number, and I frankly don't want to be the one. I'll suggest some thoughts, but at the end of the day, those are things that the commission will be pressed upon to decide in collaboration with the manager, if he recommends. I'll make some recommendations.
Okay. And we lost the last bit, but that's okay. And then, so thank you for that. The other thing I have a question about before I forget.
Mm-hmm.
No, no, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Delgado, you mentioned something about the first responders and the police, and how much we appreciate their work. So if Chief Young could possibly step up, there's a program I just heard about, and it's called the Safe Surrender Operation. Could you please discuss that for us? Because I think the more noticed people have, the better off we'll all be.
Good evening again, Chief Young, Daytona Beach PD. We are scheduling a operation, Safe Surrender. It's going to be on August 4th at Masters Domain Church of God in Christ at 511 Fremont Avenue. We haven't done one since 2016, I believe, so it's overdue. And I think now is the, we have going on, now is the perfect time to have one, and this will allow folks with a lot of low-level charges, misdemeanor warrants, so on and so forth, to be able to safely turn themselves in. And it's set up where they will come in, they'll have a judge on Skype, and they can have a discussion with the judge. And most things, they will be able to resolve right there on site and be able to walk away free of charges. We're still working out some of the logistics of it. Obviously, this incident with Officer Rayner kind of pushed us back a little bit in the planning, but we're going to finalize everything so that we can start pumping it out hard on all of our social media outlets. But again, it is set for August 4th. We're not going to cancel it, we're going to continue to move forward with it. But we just want to kind of get everything in place so we can start pushing it out because it's time. We got to start pushing it out now on social media so everybody is aware of what we're planning for that date.
Thank you.
Missed it. Real quick, while you're still out there, can you give us information? I know there are several, several different things going on where people can support Officer Rayner and his family. I know there is a GoFundMe. Wawa actually donated $1,000 to the fire department, and they donated $1,000 to the police department, and the officers donated that to his family's fund. What are some things that the people, families that are out there, I know there are yard signs going around, and there are quite a few things that people can do to help support this family?
The yard signs, we just got the second batch in of 300-yard signs, and they're going fast. Literally, almost every day when I come into the office, the door is jammed with just cards, with just generous donations from people from all over the country, just contributing to, to his cause. So I know the family is, they're setting up something to, so that people can continue to donate, but there's just, I don't have the list in front of me. I know they're planning a hockey tournament, or a hockey game is planned for him. There's stuff just coming in from everywhere. I know Orlando PD did something, but yes, I will, next time I will bring a list, so that I could have everything in front of me as far as, as far as what's being done, but, you know.
Because I know people will participate in not just the one activity, they'll participate in several, so we want to make sure all the support and funds that we can get to the family can get them to the family.
Will do.
Okay.
In the badge thing.
Gotcha.
May I? My question was for the mayor, but we changed the subject. Mr. Mayor, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Lohman said that they were going to try to stream the program. Would you tell her, or would you find out that information and send that back to us if they're able to, to stream the program so we can see it here in Daytona?
I will, I will, and I will email you guys if we are able to do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of items. The Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Community Workshop schedules next week, July 13th, at the Midtown Cultural and Education Center on George W. Ingram Boulevard. That is the first meeting. Excuse me, July 14th, at the Schnebly Recreational Center on 1101 North Atlantic Avenue, and July the 15th, at the police headquarters. The one at the police headquarters will also be a virtual one, so people that, that can't come to, I've been losing my voice all day, sorry, that can't come to the location can do it virtually. So those two, I, those three items for the meetings are there. Drew Driscoll, if you have any questions, you can email him directly here on this email. Also, I want to thank the staff that also participated in the veterans parade and ceremony. And we had a large contingency of our senior leadership team that walked in the parade. We had one individual that decided to drive, so Betty, but she was gonna walk. But I really want to thank them because they normally wouldn't, wouldn't come out on a Sunday morning for the veterans parade, but they all came out. I mean, I really do appreciate that. That shows that we are focused on being part of our community. I did want to say that as the city manager, one of the key things that I've always focused on in my career is making sure that we take care of all of employees, our public safety, but not only the public safety, but the individuals and public works that are gonna make sure those roads are taken care of so the police can drive on them and fire departments. So we will definitely, as we discussed, Mr. Sexton has been working with, with the union negotiations to make sure that we look out for those individuals. We don't want people to leave our community. We don't want to train them and then they actually go somewhere else. So we think that is very important. I also want to share that, because you may start hearing something, I'm starting to have uncomfortable conversations to make sure we move this community forward, to make sure that we do things to bring people together. So things that you as individuals have communicated with me about what you want to see change in our community, both internally and externally, those are things that we're gonna be talking about. So if you hear from a citizen or even an employee know that I'm being upfront about having uncomfortable conversations of how we do some of the things that some of you all have asked about, how do we remove some of those barriers, bureaucratic barriers, both internally and externally? So we're gonna start having that, and just from a public standpoint, we're planning a retreat for our senior leadership to talk about some team-building things, and how do we focus on some of the things that we do to be successful for the residents? And then we'll come back and bring that information to the commissioners, so we can have a staff retreat and a commission retreat to do strategic planning long-term, so you can give us your goals and objectives over the next three, six, nine, 12 years, based on conversations we've had with residents and staff. So that's where we are, and just wanted to share that information with you all, so you are aware what's, what's happening, and I'll keep you posted on what we're doing as a staff from our retreat standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City attorney?
No.
All right.
We're gonna move on to item number 12, which is our public comment form, and during this time, citizens are allowed three minutes to speak on any topic. Our first speaker is Arlo Triplet, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Sorry, but that is a reflex.
My name is Arlo Triplet, 1119 Waverly Drive. I am a veteran of the US Air Force, two tours in Vietnam, 604th Air Commander, Special Ops. And this is my friend, Terry Gordon. I'm here about the flagpole charge of $65, which I think is a insult to have to pay $65 to show your patriotism to have a flag in your yard. Terry Gordon is a Gold Star mother. I'm not sure if you are familiar with Gold Star, but it's a parent that has lost a son or daughter in active duty in a conflict. And she herself wants to erect a flagpole in her front yard with a plaque for her son. The plaque was a little bit deteriorated from Cocoa Beach Veterans Cemetery, and she wants to put the plaque with her flagpole. So the $65, I really have a problem with to have to pay, to pay patriotism to her And I'm welcome for any questions.
Well, sir, as I told you earlier when we spoke, I'm personally happy to pay for that, because it's a, it's actually a processing fee, not for the flag, but for the permitting process. So to actually get in, to construct the pole, it's not what's flown, it's actually the pole. And that's based on the cost of the city, but I will personally pay that for you all.
But I've already purchased the pole. I already have my flagpole, my flag.
Right, it's just the permit, it's a, I mean, one of the city attorneys or one of the city staff could probably explain it to you better, but it's literally the processing of the permit, and that's the price, which I've told you, I'm glad to pay personally for you at no expense to you, but it's a permitting process.
No, no, it's not that. I'd pay the $65. I have a problem with having to pay $65 to erect a pole in your yard to show your patriotism to the United States and to the city of Daytona Beach.
I understand you.
As a parent of a son that gave the ultimate sacrifice, it's very offensive to me. I'm sorry, it's just a fact.
I think they may not have been aware of that when you asked for this pole, so now that we're aware, we're saying that we would take care of that. I'm sure that wasn't on the application for the pole.
The person that took my application when I went to file for the permit, I did share all that information about me being a Gold Star parent.
And they probably didn't have the authority to make that decision on your behalf, but we recognize that, and we thank you for your son and for his life and the sacrifice that he made, and we're gonna take care of that for you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I mean, is there anything we can do to maybe put amendment to the situation with a flagpole? If you're a veteran or whatever, if you want to erect a flagpole in your yard?
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we will definitely look at that. I do understand one of the concerns that probably staff had, and when you take that application fee off, and then you have someone that may put up a flag that may be offensive, or a flag that does not go with our code. So we will definitely bring something back to the commissioners to look at the concept for the United States flag, the, I'm a veteran's flag, as a father of a son who served in the United States Army, I do understand your concern. So we'll bring something back to you all to make sure we identify, because we don't want to take that component out, and we just have people putting flags everywhere on their property. And so, but we understand, and we'll get with the Administrative Services Department and bring something back to you as a recommendation to change that code if that's your desire.
Okay.
Hold, excuse me, but there's also a code, you have fees for a purpose, and it's not to essentially block someone who is a, is a Gold Star resident. Ma'am, we have the highest regard for you. We have the highest regard for our, anyone who's served in the military. So I appreciate what you're, what you're trying to do, Mr. Fager, but I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is what you're gonna bring back to us going to eliminate the fee process, or will it just take into account if some, if it's, because I don't know that we could, and this would be up to Mr. Jagger, but you have to think about this. Can we legally say that we can waive a fee for someone who is erecting a flag, an American flag, as opposed to someone who's erecting some other sort of flag? And I guess those are things that you will go through with your staff, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, as Commissioner Reed was saying, that there was no, no intent, and staff certainly didn't know, and even if they did, they couldn't waive a fee, because traditionally, that's been, we've had a policy of not waiving fees.
Correct, Mayor, this is Derek Fager. I was not, I'm saying take away the fee, but for staff to be able to look at those items to bring back recommendations, because you are absolutely correct, there is a cost associated with staff processing these things, so we would not be bringing, just to waive that, and based on your policy and your, and probably ordinances or LDC, you all approve fees and charges periodically, and so we would not be just bringing something back to just say waive all fees for that.
And my thought was, we're not paying that as commissioners, we're paying that personally. I mean, Ms. Cantu, Reed, and myself are gonna just pay it personally, so it's not government. We're just doing it to help you guys out, because we understand how upsetting it is to you, but we'll get back to you with the rest of the information, as you've heard from the manager and the mayor, okay?
Okay. That's all we ask.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Did he say where he lived?
Waverly Street.
I have their address.
You have the address?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Several things. One, there's an RFP downstairs for Breakers Park. I didn't realize that it went out last month, that apparently the second pier that we were anticipating, the two acres on the sand, Breakers Park, the two lots that we own, all of that is in a, an RFP. I don't think the community is aware of that. I don't even know if, if the reason why the city put a kibosh on the two hotels that were supposed to go in there is because of this RFP, but somebody wants to put something in there? I would like to know a little bit more. Secondly, the bridge, there's a small bridge on West ISB, after you go past 95, a dozen years ago or so, I talked about the need for widening LPGA, that when the Margaritaville and Mosaic were announced, there was gonna be a need to widen LPGA. And Rob said, oh, no, 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 we don't need to do that, not for 30 or 40 years. He said there would not be a home built in Margaritaville until 2025 or later. Well, there are homes there now, all right? On the agenda tonight, you approve something just a few blocks from ISB on LPGA. There's only two developments, and then you're going to be at the intersection of LPGA and ISB. We have to think about that intersection, just past Tamoca Farms Road, there's a little bridge there, there is no room. There's two lanes, and then you've got like a stripe, so nobody can walk across that bridge. If it takes 10 years to go through the process, we will be beyond that. I don't know if you've heard in the paper about the distribution centers, the possibility of them coming? Well, you know what hit the fan? I was told, no, 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 don't worry about it, nothing's gonna happen on LPGA in Williamson, there's no development out there, Tanger Outlet Mall may not succeed. Well, you know what hit the fan? It is so busy out there, you can't blink. There's so many homes, so many apartments. It's only a matter of time when it hits ISB. We have to be prepared, and I'm asking you, I know you didn't believe me the last time, but I'm telling you, the development is coming. We have to look at that, not after it gets crowded, before it gets crowded. Also, on Beachside, we need to do something about Ocean Avenue. The LED lighting throughout the city, we pay for the lights. There was supposed to be a program to convert them over to LED to drop the price. I don't know if that's gotten to you. Also, Jim said that we had the, on Atlantic Avenue, I know, three seconds, the lighting on, when they were supposed...
Don't make me go. I've got gunslinger in my hands, yeah, my hands are right there.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
I've been waiting all day to do this.
Yeah, all day, eight years. Now I can die complete.
Why carefully watch my three minutes? Once again, I'm gonna speak on the, and I know our new city manager needs to get up to speed on this as well, and I'd be happy, as I've mentioned in the past, have a private discussion on this to get him up to speed. But again, I want to remind the council that it was improper back last May 20th to illegally seize, and under the cover of COVID, public land and give it away to private people. And that needs to be reversed, that still needs to be reversed. It is a violation of the city comprehensive plan, very clear in there. I've cited in the past page, I believe it's 112, it says very clearly that there is a plan to have public access at least every mile. Again, with the seizure and the dispossessment to a former, the son of a former mayor for his own personal financial gains, that was inappropriate. And what's to stop the few remaining pieces of land to suffer the same consequences? Also, I'd like to suggest that we get the website updated. It's still, especially managers' page, because it still says we're looking for a manager. So, and it still has his...
I'm not going anywhere.
Well, that's what I was hoping, because I was kind of concerned. But you have a very nice introduction video. You're here, you're doing the job, so let's move the website along. Also, there's quite a few confusing links on there. It took me quite a while to find the link to sign up for the water plant tour. That was quite an adventure. It's mentioned in your report, but there's no, there's no link, so I had to do a lot of digging. The Citizens Academy also, there's no reference to that. I've contacted several times when that's going to be reinstated. There's no information on it whatsoever. I would like to see the city council be more proactive on that. Also, I'd like to talk about the Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard Blight. There are a great number of properties that are owned by one individual owner, and they are an area where it should be the pride of Midtown instead of the blight of Midtown. As we've already mentioned, we've had a building collapse. It was not maintained for over 12 years, 13 years, and it finally collapsed. City had to bail the situation out. That's a shame. Also, I want to bring up the traffic safety. Now, we're a few months past the unfortunate death of one of the tourists that came here. I know Mayor Henry indicated his support on that. There are answers to the problem. And as Commissioner Treger pointed out, the TPO meeting unfortunately is for Flagler Beach, is not for Daytona, so I've looked that up. Lastly, I'd like to talk about veteran support.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Marjorie Johnson, on 22 South East Street. I'd like to commend our city manager with outstanding job that you are doing here as our city manager, and also Jafariah, that shooting that took place, it was terrible. And Keith Willis, Director of Leisure Services. These people are doing outstanding work, and you have hit the ground running, so we're very proud that you have restored a center meeting which was discriminated, it was discriminated against and put back in the meeting under your leadership. Also, I would like to say we have some serious problems over in my neighborhood, Midtown. All right, next is... Right next to Daytona Time, there's a lot there, it's over six feet tall. It's been that way for some time. And Martin Luther King and Wallace's depur, if you go down to Wallace, entire street full of trash, all kind of furniture, everything outside. This is a disgrace to our neighborhood. This is, is on, but I live. I'm proud of my city. I served on Conny Goers and you have several people elected to the county council who worked to get Orange Avenue done and gave the city a million plus dollars to fix it and gave you the street so that street could finally get paid. Also, I served on the bridge committee to design that. I was appointed by Billy Wheeler and Josh Wagner. We are making progress here, but Martin Luther King Boulevard do not need, and I was told with the property, it's city property, but I personally don't know who it belonged to. There's right across the street from Gerald, who used to work here, his apartment's there, right near the pool. You go there, it's six feet tall. Go down Wallace Street, full of junk all the way down the street. I was down there today and I was so disgusted when I saw all that junk. It's a, it's a rezon, you need to go with it and take care of that. Also, I would like to say that this affordable housing we've been talking about in Midtown, I haven't seen anything happen with that. Terry touched on it briefly when he came on the microphone, but I'd like to see that affordable housing done. We need that in, in Midtown. We have a redevelopment board that is getting nothing done. They've been sitting there for years and I don't see, the street's getting paved. Key Street needs to be paved. That's the street that I've lived on for 52 years. A homeowner there in that house and that entire street needs to be paved all the way down. South Street near Caroline, terrible. I want my taxpayers' dollars reinvested in my community. I'm tired of you taking my money, needed to.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is Pierre Lewis.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue, on the farmer's market. I have made several times suggestions here and in writing that one thing you could do to increase attendance beyond just publicizing it is put three to five food trucks there, put out bistro tables with chairs and umbrellas, get people to sit and linger. I don't, I, I think that would drive more people downtown. You know, it's open from seven to noon, there's nothing to eat down there, no place to go. I think the early birds would like that opportunity to sit down and I would hope the city would do something like that, support something like that. Let's talk about the streamline because that is a big issue in the beachside neighborhood. In May, that for years, the residents have been complaining about their late night parties up on their roof deck. It finally started getting official attention in May. They were granted a permit in May and the permit was very specific. They had to have specific placement of their speakers, they needed to put up a sound attenuation barrier and the sound needed to stop at midnight. None of those things have been done. In two months, none of those things have been done. And I am puzzled as to why they still stay in business. And I have gone over and listened, driven over in my car perfectly safely and listened at one and two in the morning and that sound continues. It is not right and I do not know what it is going to take to get them shut down. But that permit that they were issued is very clear. No sound after midnight, a sound attenuation barrier in place and specific placements of the speakers. Those things need to be enforced because it is very difficult for the residents living in that neighborhood. The music is very loud. And, and this is a, a business that we gave a grant to. We gave, we vacated a right of way to them to, to consolidate a property they owned and this is how they're repaying the residents? It's not right. And the other thing that's going on there, which is an issue all over the beachside, is they're parking cars and during events they park RVs on the vacant lot without a permit, without right, and that is never, never enforced against them. If we want to improve our beachside, we're gonna need to enforce those things. People who make a lot of money parking their vehicles, parking other people's vehicles on vacant lots during events have zero interest in developing them. So please do something about the streamline. It's been an ongoing issue for years. I do not understand why nothing's happening and I do find our code enforcement department to be wonderful overall, so I am puzzled as to how their hands are so tied on this. Thank you.
I'd like to address that, please. Thank you, Ms. Ruby. So Captain Lee, could we chat for a minute, please? So Captain Lee and I have been working on this for quite a bit now and we recognize the issue with the vacant lot. I received the call at 2:00 in the morning about the RVs and at 2:05, I returned the call, much to surprise the resident. Then I contact code and I say, look, we need to go over there and see what's going on. It's been an ongoing issue, which brings us to the chronic violator ordinance that we're trying to build right now. So all of these things are very much connected. So Captain Lee, could you please speak to the vacant lot and it belongs to a particular property owner and every time the same thing happens?
Well, we are, there's a variety of issues going on there. So you're dealing with sound, like Ms. Ruby was talking about, you're dealing with parking and some of that is just regular vehicle parking and then some of it is RV parking. I don't have the, the information in front of me right now, but I believe they have at least one, if not two cases that are in front of our, our magistrate coming up, I believe on Tuesday, for the RV parking. That's been an ongoing issue prior to even Bike Week it was going on. We were getting complaints from the residents that live near there about RVs pulling in there and parking. The, the other issues we've cited in the past, they have, in many of the cases, rectified some of the issues before the, the date or the cutoff date to fix the issue because of the shortness of the event. That is part of why we're changing our process and how we word the NOV or how we address these things during event times. Some of our cases that are happening during events, they're just things that are probably gonna need to be looked at as more of an irreparable and irreversible type of case versus something where you're giving a timeframe to correct. And that's, that's why we're changing the process and working through it.
And then are, is the resident allowed to speak at the code board?
Oh, absolutely.
So we might wanna, are we allowed to let the resident know?
Yes.
What's coming up is, because I'm happy to contact them.
Yeah, we, we often have complainants that if their information is there in the case, so they, we usually let them know about the case coming up, especially if they've expressed to us during the process that they want to testify. We've had complainants come and, and, and testify. Those are some of the easiest cases for us because when the magistrate in the code board hear from a resident, what's going on, backed up by the photos that we provide, it's obviously pretty impactful because it's not just hearing from us, like we picked somebody out at random and, and took enforcement action against them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
No problem. I understand it's frustrating, we're working on it, I promise you.
And I as well have been out there at 1:00 in the morning because I've had many emails as well and went out there by myself and sent and listened to the music blaring. There's a lot of music and I've received many videos in the middle of the night as well.
So I recognize people have gone by themselves, call me scared, but I had a total stranger call and invite me to meet them somewhere and I just don't do that with total strangers. So there you have it. I will go out there, but literally somebody invited me who I don't know and said, meet me over there. I just don't do that.
I understand. I know the residents.
Okay. Our final speaker tonight is Pierre Lewis.
Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franklin Street. I give it to the mayor, if he's still listening, and to the commission and Commissioner Cantu too. A lot of times me and the mayor had a conversation one time before that sometimes people bring up things that are always bad, but equally we bring up times when something is good. And this is one of those times to bring up something that's good. As a retired Marine officer and I was glad to see the 4th of July event happen to my friends, Commissioner Cantu and to my friend Sam McCloud and stuff like that. It took me back to, I remember when I was a little Cub Scout, Ms. Lily Bell Murphy got us together at Pine Haven and she assembled all the Cub Scouts on Beach Street. And I was that little kid that was waving a flag. And when I saw us marching on Main Street on the 4th of July, I saw a little kid waving a flag. And it took me back, I won't say how many years ago, but it took me back a few years ago when I was that little kid on Beach Street and the city officials were there, there. So if you think that your face on Main Street didn't matter, there's some little kid that's probably raising a flag out there, waving it, I should say, and he's gonna remember that you were there at this 4th of July. I don't know if he grew up and be a Marine, but he'll be there. My ride or die partner, Letitia, I got you right there too. So I'd like to say that thank you. That event was well received, well done, and I'm hoping that if anybody has to speak to the favor of saying that, I hope that continues and something like that goes on again and every year, you ought to be commended. And I think it was a very well done, not present day. And since I got just a couple of minutes, I'll just mention two little quick things and that's that we have been monitoring that veterans' bridge that's there. I've taken some photos that's there and I would say probably talk to Councilman Wheeler. She's got some of those photos because we noticed that people are drawing along the, the area that's there and they need to clean that up. So myself, Josh Wagner and a few others are looking at what kind of committed we can work on to try to clean up some of that stuff that's being done on the east side of that bridge. And then the last thing, I heard somebody mention about unique designs. If the staff would probably advise to the commission, if you look at the master plan and also on the area plan, there's something that talks about a unique design that's actually supposed to be used for the Midtown area. It actually is, has chapter and verse and all that. So when you decide that what's probably gonna be done in there, there are some provisions that talks about it in the master plan and in the area plan. But again, leaving on a positive note and on a good note, the 4th of July parade for veterans was a stupendous occasion, so I thank you all for that. Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Thank you for your service.
Well, on that positive note, good night, Daytona Beach.